Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take your roll call.
All right, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Combs.
Present.
Ms. Nelson. Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Simmons. Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Present.
Mr. West.
Here.
Six council members present and two absent.
All right, thank you. Pastor Williamson is here to do our invocation.
I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence for our fellow Americans in Waukesha, Wisconsin. Just hours ago, we lost a child among those that are deceased, and the hearts are broken. We share that with them as we remember. Father in heaven, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us and for the privilege to live it in times such as these. We're grateful, Lord, for the nation that is our home, and as we begin the holiday season with Thanksgiving, we thank you, God, that we have those considering our constitution and our flag as worth their life. They're deployed all over our world and serving on bases throughout America to keep our nation both safe and free. We remember our men and women in uniform. In addition, in every city, hamlet, and village across America, we have police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and first responders at all levels who do never consider their own personal safety when they come to our aid or the aid of our neighbors. We remember our public safety officers at every level across this nation. I'm grateful, Lord, tonight, for those who serve this city. I'm thankful, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, those that lead departments, and those that are on the ground every day, many overnight, to serve the people, their neighbors, and their friends. I'm grateful, Lord, today, for the integrity of this city government, and I pray, Lord, you will continue to perpetuate that integrity as we move forward as your people. I'm grateful, Lord, tonight, for those that have come from the community and beyond to share in this session. I pray, Lord, that any discussions that are held and any decisions that are made, that they be pleasing first to you. I want to remember the city family tonight and anyone within it who faces grief and loss, physical or emotional affliction, or any need or trial or burden, that you continue to bless them faithfully as you have in our past. Lead this time together for us tonight, and let us be a blessing to you, oh Lord. We pray together in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Praise the Lord.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
All righty. Next up, we have a special occasion tonight. We're going to present a proclamation to our soon-to-be retiring police chief. If you would, come on. Big day.
I don't know.
You may not do it. You want to go. All right, so I'm going to read this. Whereas on the occasion of the retirement of Police Chief Stephen Myers, an employee of the City of Fulton, after 24 years, two months, and 11 days, it is proper that the City report an expression of its great appreciation of his faithful and exemplary service as an employee of the City of Fulton. And whereas Steve's long corporate career began in 1982 with Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, hard to disempower the city. On September 18, 1997, Steve began his special investigation into the police department. He was subcuted promotion to the Police Sergeant, and his final position was Police Chief on July 8, 2002. And whereas throughout his nearly 40 years of law enforcement experience, Steve received a number of commendations, including recognition from Homeland Security and the federal hero of his investigations for investigative skills and commitment to public service. Steve modernized practices and policies and fought for enhanced equipment and gear for the safety of his officers and the community at large. And whereas Steve's vision for the Fulton Police Department to hold a positive, interactive relationship with the citizens of Fulton was marked by strategic training focused on crisis intervention and mental health assistance. Steve built a family amongst his staff, family committed to not only protecting each other, but to serving and protecting all members of the Fulton community, remembering dignity, respect, and diligence. True. Now therefore, I allow him, Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our community, extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Steve Myers for these many years of loyal service in this community. We wish to convey our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Steve and his family for much success and happiness in the upcoming years. In with this word, I guarantee you, set my hand and call the official seal of the City of Fulton for the 23rd day of November, 2001. Congratulations. Speak.
Bill called me this morning and wanted to know if I had my speech ready. I said, "No, I don't think there's going to be a speech." But I do want to say to the City of Fulton, I want to thank you all. I want to especially thank the citizens of Fulton. They've been very supportive of me and my department throughout the years, and certainly the councils I've worked with throughout the years, and a number of mayors. I think maybe four I've worked with, and everybody's supported us, supported me in the department. And I think that's why, in my opinion, in a way, we've been so successful, is we have all worked together for the safety and security of our citizens. And of course, that's the most important thing. I talked last week to the group, and the thing I told them, you know, is success comes when we all work together, and I think that's very true. And so, again, I want to thank you all very much for the time. I didn't, when I started hearing all that, it's just like, where did the time go? It just seems like yesterday. But again, I want to thank you very much, and I hope you all have great success, and I know you will have it, and I know my predecessor will hopefully keep the department intact and moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief Myers. All right. This time, we'll take comments from visitors. Anyone wishing to speak to the council, if you would step to the podium, give us your name and address, and leave your comments to five minutes or less. And seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Next up, the approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. Tonight, we have three items: the approval of City Council meeting minutes for October 26, the council meeting minutes of November 9, and the Director of Administration report for October. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to remove the Director of Administration report from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Alpha and Bravo has written.
Congressman West, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. I thought I heard someone say second.
I was waiting.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if I did or not.
So we have motion in a second to remove DOA and approve A and B. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. DOA report.
Okay. It's under the Engineering Department. What, page nine? Under inflow and infiltration. Kyle, if you would. We're talking about the resin spikes, resin prices have spiked, and they are proposing a price increase to cover that added cost. And then, the last sentence, you say the sewer department will perform point repairs they can safely and effectively perform while we contact, contract out the others. So what's the plan there?
So, when we had busy sewer camera of the lines, there are some areas that we've got a physically point repair that they can't be lined before they're, they have some point repairs, some repairs that physically have to be dug up.
Sure.
So, and the sewer department are going to do what they can do, what they can manage, and then lines that are maybe deeper and are harder to repair or that they don't have time for, then we will contract that out. We have a contractor that we have lined up to do that.
Okay. So what about the lining? Where are we staying with that? How much of an increase are they looking, asking for?
I don't know yet, but I do know, I do know it's coming. It's not, we have talked with the representative, and he's given us a kind of percentage increase. I don't know what that, what that's going to amount to dollar-wise specifically yet. So we're waiting to get that information. We thought we'd have it. I thought I'd have it by the meeting.
Sure.
But I don't have it yet, so I can report back to you.
Okay, if you would. I mean, just, I mean, did he give you an idea of a percentage, or no idea even then that?
They did give me a little bit of a percentage, and I want to say, what was it like?
Okay.
Daryl, do you remember what that was?
Just on, I mean, it's just on the resin amount. It's not, like, their labor and whatnot is not included with it.
Sure.
Yeah.
So you can't say $100 is going to go up 100 to 110, 115 because of the resin change?
Right, it's not on their overall bid for it. It's just on the resin price. And what I would say is that the resin company that's used, on all the bidders that originally bid, they use the same resin company. So it's, you know, it's, if we, if we move to a different, you know, if we rebid it out, I'm sure we would have to absorb any increase.
Right.
You know, again.
And what we talked about is, you know, the budgetary number is fixed. We will just cut back on the number of lineal feet.
Right.
That we do this year.
Do the worst stuff first, I guess.
I think when we figured it, Mike, we were 25,000, something like that, overall, that we would have to reduce, you know, from about 400, 450,000 that we were planning to do. Something in that realm.
All right. Thank you. Another question, under miscellaneous, I guess, I think it's on the next page. Yes, it is. Working with purchasing to identify grant to replace Fourth Ward Tunnel, Westminster Avenue, 7th to 4th. What's the Fourth Ward Tunnel?
The Fourth Ward Tunnel, we've become very acquainted with the Fourth Ward Tunnel this week.
I used to live over there, and I don't know what you're talking about.
Westminster and 7th, there's a, there's a tunnel that, stormwater tunnel that drains, kind of the drainage area that's bounded by Westminster and Jefferson Street, and goes all the way up to William Woods College, about where the horse barn is, just north of the horse barn. Everything kind of drains down to the tunnel. That's, the tunnel starts at 7th Street and ends really, it goes all the way through the Housing Authority and ends close to 2nd Street. So we actually, a few of us had to traverse that tunnel to get an existing condition of that tunnel, so hopefully it'll help us get a grant to replace that sucker. But it's a very old tunnel in town, made of cobble and brick in some areas.
Really?
Yeah.
And Kyle, is that where, is that located where I noticed where the college is and right on the corner, almost close to the corner, they tore down a house, and there's a driveway there. There's a big old hole inside the driveway, and then it looks like it goes down. I looked in the hole, and it was, it looked like this sewer, the bricks kind of caved in. Is that the same place?
I don't think so. Where are you specifically at?
On West, on West 7, right on the corner. It's not on the corner, but it's, you come up on, going east on West 7.
This would be real close to 7th and Westminster, so if it's close to 7th and Westminster, just east of Westminster, two houses, I think. That tunnel actually runs, the tunnel actually runs underneath one of those houses, so.
Okay, so it's the same place.
Wow, okay.
Is it, is it to the point where it's a safety concern at this point?
That's, that's what we were, that's what our purpose really was this week, is to assess the condition of it. Structurally, structurally, I'd say for the most part, it's, it's okay. It actually kind of reduces size, reduces down in size from the top to the bottom, which is not typically what should happen, so. But we do, one of the fraternity houses up there, Delta Ta Delta wants to expand their fraternity, but in order to do that, this tunnel's right in their way. So it will become a problem for us soon. There are some spots that are really bad. It's been patched in several areas, but is it an immediate threat? I would say no, but it's something that we need to plan to replace.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
That's all I had for Kyle.
I have one, one thing for Kyle on the, on stormwater, and over in the Stinson Creek stuff, we, we've talked about the inflow of water back into the creek. But then we received a permit on stormwater, a new permit from the DNR. Do the, the two of them don't go together at all?
So the, the new stormwater permit is, is a revision essentially of a permit that we've already had. It's a, it's a repermitting process. So DNR have redone their kind of rules and regulations and put out a new permit and standards that we have to live by. A lot of them are ones that we're already doing. But they do, between, between Stinson Creek, that stormwater permit that I'm referencing, which, which is called an MS4 permit, you don't really need to know that other than it's a stormwater permit, and Daryl's sewer permit, wastewater treatment plant permit, they all get entangled together because they all outfall to the, to the, to Stinson Creek. So Stinson Creek kind of governs.
But it's two different, completely different things right there.
Two, two different, but, but they're kind of, they're affect, they're affecting the same stream, so the stream controls both permits. So they're, they're kind of entwined together because Stinson Creek has a TMDO, has that, is a regulated stream, and therefore it regulates, brings more on Daryl's permit and my permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the DOA report?
Yes, on page 18, this is the Assistant DOA section. I had a couple of things there. Repairs and maintenance projects, painting the old electric building at the old warehouse. Why are we spending money there?
Oh, because it's, it's a good building, and it, but it's just a little, it was a little deteriorated, and we're going to preserve it. Right now, we're renting it out.
Okay. And then under cemeteries, working on some stones that had been damaged at Pioneer. Is that vandalism or something else?
Yes.
So we reported, did police reports and all that on?
I'm guessing they, it was reported to the police.
They did.
Yes.
Okay.
Some vandalism, some just upkeep. Yep.
Anything that's not repairable? All right, great. Thank you.
All righty. I have one thing under, under the solid waste. We, for the longest time, we were, we were reporting what we did in recycle and in trash. And then, for some time, we haven't been showing the recycle piece. Is there a reason why? Are we lumping it all in one now, or are we dumping it? What are we doing?
Robert will have the report for you next council meeting.
Thank you.
Well, it says 770.57 tons with, for an average, and it also says it's trash haul. It doesn't say anything about recycling, then underneath it, it has what we've done in roll-offs.
That's been admitted. I move acceptance of the Director of Administration report.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to say thank you for answering the questions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. All right, all those in favor say yes.
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 Slow, just a minute.
That's okay. It's late. Gets darker, and we will blame it on that.
I know.
So, moving on, we have next up our presentation and acceptance of the October financial report. This whole flag is here to hit the highlights for us.
Before I tell you about the sales tax, I will ask you to look at the notes, and under gas, it says capital includes 1,000, and there should be another zero there, because the gas department's capital outlay was actually about $1,750.
Okay.
So that's on me. Sales tax collections are up eight and a half percent, and I think that a large factor of that is inflation, plain and simple.
Right.
I think anybody who reads the newspapers has read that inflation last year was running somewhere at 6%, 5.9 to 6.2, and I think we're probably up there again this year. So that's what I contribute, that large increase. Yeah, sales are higher because costs are higher.
Sure.
So naturally, sales tax are going to be higher.
Yeah.
So I've tried to note everything in the notes. We did transfer monies from the Fulton Commons TIF to the debt service in preparation for a December 1st interest-only payment, so. And are answering, any questions you have?
Kathy, I do have one here. And under the general fund, I know last week that we, or last meeting, we spoke of doing $2,500 out of the discretionary, the council discretionary fund to purchase some new.
At the first November meeting.
And so, is that, is that $1,400 part of that?
No.
Or is that above and beyond?
No, because I think that decision was made in November.
Right.
So I intend to do a transfer.
Okay.
From admin to parks and rec, but that did not happen in October.
Okay.
This was already done.
Okay.
But I have seen several requisitions for lights within the last week.
Question. So you just mentioned the TIF, and we moved some money over for the commons. When is that going to be paid off?
I think the bond issuance was in 2006, the latter part of 2006.
And it can go 23 years.
And it can go 23 years, so it'll be 29.
Oh, man, okay. All right, thank you.
So it's going to be long.
And it could, could go longer if it needs to?
No.
No.
It'll be.
By state statute, 23 years is it.
If it doesn't fulfill its.
And we, we had learned by the time we did that TIF, the city does not back that one.
So. Which is a good thing.
Which is a good thing.
For the city, yeah, not so much.
So if that TIF doesn't generate enough remit to pay off the debt, it is not the city's responsibility to pick up the short.
It's bondholders' risk.
So at that point, the sales tax will regre, regress?
The incremental sales tax for that area only will be retained by the city instead of transferring.
Property tax, I'm sorry, property tax too?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just reading this. I'm trying to refresh my memory a little bit there.
The sales tax and the property tax will be distributed to the taxing entities across the normal formula.
Sure.
County will get some, will get some, school will get some property tax.
Well, we're still talking eight years, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we behind on that? And I'm sorry, this, I'm just curious.
The revenues are not sufficient to make the debt service.
So we've been following.
So, so what the trustee does is they will pay the interest first, and then whatever's remaining, they will put towards principal.
Can the rate be adjusted to catch back up if things get better over there? I mean, economy-wise and business-wise, is it?
No. What needs to happen is the developer, when the TIF was proposed, had three outlots in front of Sullivan's, one of which has developed. There was, you know, there was the strip mall, there was some other retail establishments, and a lot of new sales tax proposed that wasn't ever created.
Those businesses in the strip mall are not, do not produce sales tax, plain and simple, so.
Well, a lot of things don't.
So if, if it, if it's going to end up cash flowing, it's going to have to get some real serious sales tax generators building in that, in the TIF district.
Okay.
Okay.
Could happen.
Could happen.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Approve, or move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Acceptance.
Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next up, unfinished business, smart grid.
Hey, guys. Well, we're still billing those same two routes. We have walked several others. Today, Kathy did do a test pull, but she didn't take it all the way through billing because she's trying to commit billing right now. So we got how many no reads we got through. And on, we did five routes, and after looking at the numbers, Kathy and I felt at least two of these will probably go on through billing, and maybe four of the five. And that's about 1,390 meters. That, we felt at least two of those routes will go in December, so that's good news. And that's, when we get the other Route 30 done, that just about finishes up all the routes that are fully deployed, all three services. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. The guys and gals made great strides in the last 60 days getting some of this stuff. Working and. Working in Kathy's crews, you know, got the numbers in and I think, I think she's got everything at like twenty-six meters. Everything freezes. But of those four routes, that we think at least two of them will go, the percentage pull was between ninety and ninety-five percent of the meters came through. So that's where we're at.
Thank you very much. Next up, Legends Recplex facility update.
Everything at the Recplex seems to be trending upward. We've been very busy in November. Memberships are gradually increasing. October revenue was higher than the previous months. I think November revenue is going to be the highest so far. So we're, everything's moving in the right direction. Our banquet hall rentals, they're up. We've been, we rented the banker room for several different activities. No wedding receptions yet, but we're still, we're still working that way. Our batting cage in our turf area, we're seeing a lot more rentals in that. And we're having a lot more birthday parties. We had several in October, we had few in November, and we got some scheduled for December. So those are increasing as well. In December, we, we got several activities. We have a wiffle ball tournament for adults. We got a dodgeball tournament for adults. We're going to start advertising for our men's basketball league, which is going to happen in January. On the tenth of December, we're going to do what we call a Little Legends Night, where parents can drop off their kids kindergarten through fifth. We're going to have some activities for the kids and the parents can go on a date, they can go shopping, they can just have a night out. So that's on December tenth. And as we, like I said, as we get into January, we're going to do some, some adult basketball stuff and probably some adult youth volleyball tournaments and leagues. Kyle and I, I think it was a week or week or two ago, we did kind of a one-year walkthrough with River City Construction and the architects. Just kind of look at some of the maintenance issues, some things that we had some concerns about. I think we're pretty satisfied. River City's been, they've been there this week, kind of addressing some of the small maintenance issues, so again, those taken care of. There's a couple flooring issues that we brought to their attention. They're looking into them. But the thing with the flooring, we have a longer warranty. So we got longer than a year. So if, if we discover some things with the flooring, we can get those taken care of later. But that's about it. Any questions?
Yes, is the elevator working?
Elevator is working. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I saw in the, in the DOA report, I'd bring that up, but memberships and all that start, it seems to be on a steady increase, which is, which is great. And I think, you know, this time of year, probably going to see even more of that, you know, where people are moving from outdoors to indoors to do their exercising and, you know, that sort of thing.
And I think we're seeing a lot more people that just have, you know, because we've had the youth basketball league, we've had more adults in there watching their kids and things like that. So I think they're seeing some of the benefits that we have to offer and hopefully that, that will continue.
Good.
Yes.
Clay, I know this weekend, I was in on Saturday, and, and I know this weekend you had a big event there. A two-day event where somebody had rented the banquet room. Do you want to talk about that at all?
It was a church, I guess, conference. They rented the bank room. They also rented other areas because they had some kids there. We kept it open a little bit later for them so they could have some activities. And I think it went real well. I think they were pleased with it.
And if you went by, you definitely knew they were in there. No doubt about it.
Clay, is it, I, I, I hear you said that you're going to have an event where the parents can drop the kids off?
Yes.
Would it be wise for us to invent, not invent, look into those, those wrist things that you tape for the kids for, for entry or something like that? Would that be something that we?
Yeah, I think we could do that. We, we have those. So I think that's a good idea. Yeah, that we can identify who's there, who's there for that activity. So that's, that's a good suggestion.
Very good. Lots of new stuff. You seem probably lot, kind of something new every day around here, I bet.
Yeah. And we, we got a lot of things we're working on. So a lot of fitness classes that we got out there that we're just trying to get instructors for. So we're just going to keep adding to it and adding to it and hopefully somebody will find something they like.
Great work out there. Thanks for the update, Clay.
And just to be clear, I wasn't there working out.
You got to start somewhere, John.
Signing my in-laws up so they go work out.
You can do it, Dan. All right. Moving on to new business, we do, next up have representatives from our Fulton Police Department tonight to present and request to rename our police department. So if you, who's here?
Lieutenant Labway is here with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
And to the council and administration, we want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. There's a request that's been made, which you may have a copy of, and I would like to clarify what the intent of this request is. Mrs. Doyle, did they have a copy of what we submitted? Okay. What the members of the police department have in mind is a plaque for the lobby of the police department. Recognizing the efforts of Chief Myers in moving from our downtown location to our current building. And while there were countless people involved in making this happen and, and acquiring our new facility, Chief Myers worked tirelessly at moving our department forward and making it better in every aspect. Chief Myers has hired everyone that works in our building except for just two people. The police department building is made of more than bricks and concrete. It's made of the people that work there and Chief Myers has been our mentor, our leader, and not just professionally, but personally as well. So we're not asking for signage out front, naming the building for him, but we are asking for a plaque inside the building, recognizing his efforts that have made the department what it is today and for laying that foundation of what it will be tomorrow. Does anybody have any questions of what we're asking for?
I think that's a very clear, appropriate request.
Motion to approve the plaque as requested.
Second.
Definitely second it.
So that'll be, if we do that, would it be something that, that we could appropriate some money towards that? I guess we'll get a nice plaque made or whatever.
Can you guys come up with some verbiage?
Sure. We very humbly and respectfully thank you and just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Let's make, let's make this official. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. All right, thank you very much. All right. Next up, we'll, we've got a representative, Diane Neder, step on up here from our garden club to present a request for fee waivers for us, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Neder. I'm with Fulton Garden Club. I would like to start with a short report on last year's Youth Arbor Day celebration. Even with the rain and the cool temperatures, we served about a hundred and ten children, including four H youth volunteers. There were about eighty-five adults, including the parents and adult volunteers. The partnership with other businesses and organizations in our community was amazing. It really was. We were, we were able to stay under a budget of three hundred dollars. We even returned thirty-eight dollars to Federated Garden Clubs of Missouri where we got the grant from, and we intend to write enough for another grant from them also for this one. I had, we had a total of two hundred and eighty trees to give away. Approximately two hundred and forty were given to the attendees. A few were planted at the park and the rest, the remainder were planted by Stream Team. For Saturday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, once again Fulton Garden Club is requesting use of Veterans Park, including the Whitlow, Atkinson, Ingle shelters, as well as the amphitheater. Requesting fees waived, please. You all should have a copy of the proposed map, pretty much the same as it was last year. I think you can all see the environmental and social benefits for repeating this community event again in twenty twenty-two and on and on and on, we hope. And then we have the bonus. This event fulfills the third and fourth standards or requirements for becoming a Tree City USA. Standard three is the budget for the event, which is what we are figuring for ours, two dollars per person. The fourth standard is asking for a proclamation. And the National Garden Club provides yearly Arbor Day proclamation to all clubs, and we would display this at the event. In addition, maybe Mayor Cannel would consider a city proclamation for Little Ice Cream?
I could do that.
It's my understanding.
You can't take bribes.
Ethics violation.
Be careful.
He had some last year, but.
Don't tell him he's a idiot.
It's my understanding that Kyle and Stream Team are working on the first and second standards or requirements for this Tree City USA. And in doing that, Fulton can and will achieve Tree City USA status. Another amazing accomplishment for the city of Fulton and our surrounding communities.
Yes.
I can't climb trees anymore to save them, but I will support planting as many trees as I, we can. Thank you, and we appreciate your consideration for our request. Any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you all for all that you do.
Yes.
And this is just another example of, of our community caring enough to, to just give of your time.
I wish we could do more. If we had more woman power, we could.
Yeah, yeah, they're out there.
Men can be members of the garden club too.
Right.
I did want to share, this is a forum, it's called Why Community Trees Are Important. It talks about Tree City USA. Courtney, Kyle, and Stream Team and I will work on getting a copy of that to you so you can better understand what that is and what we're achieving through that. Okay? Any questions?
I would entertain a motion, yeah.
So I move that we waive the fees for the park, for the, what's it called, the Arbor Day? Arbor Day Celebration Veterans Park for Saturday, April twenty-third.
Motion and a second. Any questions or other discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate the fact that you're trying to help us get, earn the Tree City USA. That's something I've been aware of for several, several years. I've just never taken action on it. So I'm glad to see somebody taking action for that.
I agree. I agree.
I just hope you have a great weather.
I do too. Well, this time we decide we might have to have a hot chocolate bar and a coffee bar.
If you plan for that, it'll be warm.
Along with ice cream.
It was fun regardless, and it will be again.
Absolutely.
Thanks very much. All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. All righty.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Tamara Tatisian is here, our executive director with the Chamber of Commerce, to present our overview for twenty twenty-one. What happened?
Uh-oh. To pull that down a little bit. There you go. Those before me are a lot taller. So thank you for having me tonight. Happy Thanksgiving week. Looking forward to having some turkey and dressing myself, so it's a special week.
Gobble, gobble.
Gobble, gobble. So this is my end of year report. We kind of talked about some stuff, I think, when we were here in October, but I wanted to give you more of a formal report on the things that we have accomplished during twenty twenty-one. As a reminder, the Chamber and the Fulton Area Development Foundation are sister organizations, working towards kind of a common goal. We have a strategic plan that we share. The Chamber focuses on our networking and our marketing for our business community, and then our F A, F A D F focuses on our economic development. We have one staff that does the work for both of those organizations. We do have some changes to our staff, so I'm going to talk about those really quick. We have a new marketing and special events coordinator, Amy Books, that just started with us on November first. We're very excited to have Amy. She lives here in Fulton. She's from Moberly, but her, she moved to Fulton with her spouse. He's from here. She has a degree in digital marketing, and so she's excited to be with the Chamber. She's working on some really cool things right now for the Holiday Shop Local, our twenty twenty-two community profile and membership directory. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight for a introduction to you all, but she will be at some events that are coming up for you guys and our December Business After Hours. So you'll have a chance to meet her at that time. Our strategic plan. So we have our strategic plan, workforce development, economic development, advanced business education for our K through twelve and our colleges, our supporting entrepreneurs, financial sustainability and maximizing our operations, and then delivering value to our members. So I just wanted to remind you all about our strategic plan, and these are the buckets that we perform our work. So economic development. This has been a pretty impressive year. Darrell and I were just talking a few minutes ago because we were really hammering out some requests for information to Missouri Partnership this year. And it has kind of slowed down, but year to date with them, we had eighteen RFIs that we submitted. Now, keep in mind, not only did we submit maybe one property, but we submitted several properties, trying to keep our name in Callaway County in front of Missouri Partnership. So we have like three properties that we're always trying to continuously pitch. We also worked on five industry, non-traditional projects. Those did not come through Missouri Partnership. So we had twenty-three of those year to date. Missouri Partnership was here yesterday. They have a new employee named Carol Weber, and she came to town. And I spent the day with her, driving around. We went out and looked at y'all's hundred and sixty acres. We just want to give her the visual, so when she receives those requests for information, she knows what that property really truly looks like. So she was pretty excited about being in Fulton yesterday and having the grand tour. So at the beginning of the year, we did a mock RFI. If you all recall, we talked about that in partnership with the city of Fulton, Callaway Electric, and the Chamber. So part of that was they, one of the things they did was they looked at our website, the Callaway Chamber of Commerce. So then they, we did a RFI and then we completed a site visit. So it was like a three-part thing. And then they gave us a final report at the end of the, all of that was complete. So we received that, I think, at the first of November. So with the mock RFI, we got some really good ratings on that. They gave us some things of areas improvements that I was excited to see because those are things that we can work on and implement. One of the things that they missed, mentioned was getting a list of economic development incentives that we can list, that it can be common, and then we can have those conversations if we ever have a visitor come to the area. So those are just some of the list of things that they gave us for areas improvement for the mock RFI, including our website and adding an economic development, which we do, but beefing that up where somebody that comes into our community or is looking at our community through the Chamber website can see the property and the quality of life and all of those things. So they've kind of given us a list of those things, and we'll be getting to make those improvements in January. So then the site visit, they gave us some recommendations on that as well. They, you know, things like branding all the handouts that we give them. So if they're coming from Callaway Electric Cooperative, they have those handouts branded Chamber, City of Fulton, et cetera. They even said, y'all need to limit the number of people on the tour. So when Bill was with us, we had Gary Youngerman, we had a whole van full of people when we took them on that site tour. And so.
More isn't always better, huh?
And more is not always better, so. But you know what? Everybody was kind of excited. They wanted to, you know, see it, and they wanted to have conversation with the consultants. So we had a whole van full of people rolling through the community, and they said, you know, maybe y'all ought to just kind of limit it to a couple of people and the consultants instead of having sixteen people in a fifteen-passenger van. So then having some stops where they actually meet some people, you know, stopped at Westminster or William Woods, and they kind of identified them along the way or along the path. Drive up to the front door of the Dollar General Distribution Center. We showed them the back end. They want to see the front. Them focused really on the private sector businesses during the tour and not so much on, on the public. And then they said that they would like to see that the city have an incentive strategy to be able to communicate that when they meet with the city. So that's something that if the city council could maybe have that discussion. So that's something that, um, if the city council could maybe have that discussion and then be ready for when we have, um, a site visit. Okay, so, with, along with our strategic plan, um, supporting our entrepreneurs is very important in our community, and we've been doing that very well, uh, over 2021, and I think we get better and better every single year. So, um, we've had 76 business visits since May, and these are just different business visits that we've done, but they're really strategic about those business visits, because we're really talking to those owners and small business owners. What do you need to help you be successful? It's not just going in and saying, how's business? How can we help you be successful? And we've had different requests from business owners that have said, hey, can you help me get a certification as a women-owned, minority-owned business? Yes, we can help you with that. Um, we've also assisted 33 businesses, and when I say this, these are people that are looking to open up their own business. Sometimes when you start having that conversation and they're working on their business plan, there's maybe that aha moment of, this might not be such a great idea. After there's some marketing research, you start working on the financials, maybe you're not going to make as much as you think you would with that business idea. Um, you know, and those are hard conversations when you're coaching businesses, but that's what we're there for. All of the tools that the Small Business Development Center for the state of Missouri has, we have in our toolbox. We have a relationship with them, and when they walk out of there, they can use that for free of charge for all of those businesses that we help. Um, next, we had some additional things that we were doing. We held 14 classes this year for our entrepreneurs, and we held mostly on those through webinars instead of in-seat in class. Uh, we found, as you can see with the numbers, that people really like to do those webinars, small business owners, from the comfort of their business, because they don't have to leave, because a lot of times they don't have an employee that can cover them while they go to a class. So that's really been successful, and we plan to continue to do some of that next year, but also have some in, in-seat. Um, on November 1st, we held our 16th annual Show Me Innovation Pitch Competition, and you may notice in this picture that we were right here in your council chambers, holding our pitch competition. Um, we had six people that pitched their business idea. We had a first and second place win, winner. Uh, first place was Smoke &amp; Pickle, which is a food truck. And the second place was Serenity Valley Winery, and they, um, are doing an expansion. Our judges this year were from Missouri, uh, Technology Center, Missouri Department of Economic Development, Fulton High School's FBLA teacher participated to assist us in getting into, with the FBLA students to encourage them to start businesses in our community. Um, the, uh, former entrepreneur, Dick Davis, and we had Mid-Mo Regional Planning that was here as well. So it was a great day, and, uh, we had some folks that walked out with some, some winnings and some prizes, and we also had some, uh, gift bags and swags that we gave to the other people that participated as well. So thank you for letting us use your space. I think it was well-used, and it was a great location to have a, a pitch competition. Um, so, the next thing I want to talk about is workforce development. So, a couple of weeks ago, I was on a call, and they were going through all of the counties in central Missouri and talking about Callaway County, and our unemployment rate is, of September 2021 is at 2%.
Wow.
Um-
Wow.
That's why I said wow. That is really low, but you, keep in mind, that is folks that are drawing unemployment. That doesn't mean those that do not receive any unemployment benefits. Um, Missouri job postings, um, and since September of 2020 to September of 2021, has increased by 23%. So they showed this diagram to me that I went, ooh, wow. So there was like 196,000 jobs, and then, you know, in April, it took this huge dive, and then it came back up. Um, and now there's like 205,000 jobs versus 196,000 jobs that were happening in April 2020, so you go, okay, so look at all these new jobs, and we have a problem with workforce. And we realized that. They also talked about some of the, um, positions in our region here in central Missouri, RNs, food prep service, personal care, retail, construction, building and grounds, management. So these are ones that we're trying to identify. Okay, we know that we need, we have these openings here, what can we do to help? Um, we are relaunching the Moant program with State Tech. Met with them about three weeks ago, and we are partnering with CMCA to help us to get the clients. Remember, back in 2020, w, we had the program, we had it in place, they had their instructor, but we had a hard time getting people signed up to participate. We had eight people that signed up. And then when the pandemic hit, it was just, yeah. So, we're relaunching that. We're going to do that in January. CMCA is going to help us with those. Callaway Chamber of Commerce is going to help with the businesses, and so we can match and partner, partner them up. Um, we did a construction class, uh, with 10 high school students, and they actually got out there in those pictures here, they got out and built something. So they learned all the tools of what you use in construction, so they had a visual and a name with it, and then they got out there and built it. Um, we held Callaway Careers Day with Westminster and William Woods students, brought them down to the Playhouse, um, and we had six businesses that talked about their business, what they, uh, positions they had open, and what they were looking for in employees. Um, we had about 15 students that participated, but William Woods and Westminster are super excited about it, and they want us, us to do some more showcase, so that people know that we have good jobs here in Callaway County. So we had like One Canoe Two, the Callaway Bank, Ameren Missouri, um, PFS Brands, AZZ, um, Dollar General Distribution that participated on that day. So it was a great day and great learning. Uh, we held our National Manufacturing Days tours this year, and then we also have been assisting with interviews at Fulton High School to help s, the students with their interview skills, which has been fun. First child I got, he was chewing his gum, and I said, that's not going to work. Um, so, y, you all asked also for me to continue to give you some information about our chamber activities. In 2021, we've held so far 86 events, uh, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, business breakfast after hours, webinars. Uh, we continue to do our Callaway County Community Updates once a month, and I appreciate that participation. Then, you know, of course, our annual banquet, golf tournament, Town and Country, and those things. We still have a few things left this year. Uh, one of them is our holiday, uh, Business After Hours that will be held on December 14th at Westminster College at the Backers Dining Hall. So if you can come, we'd greatly appreciate that. We'd love to see you, and that's always a fun event. Um, for 2022, we're working on that calendar, we're getting people signed up. We have our annual banquet that is scheduled for Thursday, January 27th, at 5:00 PM at 54 Country, so I hope you all can attend. At this time, I would like to formally ask, um, request our funding for 2022, and I will take any questions that you may have for me.
Tamara, quick question. Remind me, or remind us, the relationship with the Missouri Job Center?
Okay.
And, are you just, are you still just neighbors, or, I, I thought there was a-
Yeah, and so we're still, uh, so I have submitted all of my paperwork to, um, Office of Workforce Development for us to get a workforce development person here in Callaway County.
Okay.
And so that is in the works, it just hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so are they-
But they're still actively here. They still have somebody that mans the office on Thursday. They did some CDL training sign-ups, um, last Thursday. I think they had 18 people that came in to sign up for that free training. Um, there was a few that did not qualify for the program, uh, but they were super excited about the ones that they did get signed up for that.
Okay, but officially, they're just your neighbor, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then just a comment, you mentioned 2% unemployment. What I've always been taught in terms of numbers is anywhere from 3.5% to 4% is actually considered full employment. So when you get below 4% to 3.5%, what, all you're doing is stealing employees from other businesses. You're really not growing anything. So if we're at 2% unemployment, all we're doing is shuffling the, shuffling the deck chairs.
Yeah, and I think y'all probably have seen that with a lot of movement in this community. I mean, I have a new person. I had to get that new person from somewhere. I lost a person, you know? I mean-
I mean, that's the stuff that, when we're that low, that's where we have to be bringing people into our community, and that's where the incentives come in, and the, the number of rooftops and, and all of that stuff is what, I mean, we, we need to grow our community to meet those, those job needs.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tamara.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much. And we, later in the meeting, we'll talk again about the, uh, agreement.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have representatives from Great River Engineering here to provide an update on Second Street Bridge.
Yeah. I'd like to introduce, uh, Michael Teal and Jeff Vanderit, um, who are with me, with me tonight. Uh, Michael is our very experienced project engineer, uh, who's over this project for us, and, uh, I'll let him give a little better introduction to Jeff.
Thank you, Kyle. Mayor, Director, Madam Clerk, and Counsel. Kyle mentioned, I'm Michael Teal, I'm the project engineer for the city of Fulton. Um, I will be overseeing this project on Second Street, with the Second Street-Stensin Creek Greenway Bridge. We're going to be working with MoDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and Great River Engineering, Jeff, um, to work and complete this project, uh, next summer. Um, this is also going to go in conjunction with our Second Street, uh, rebuild from the roundabout to the bridge. So it's my honor to introduce Jeff Vanderit with Great River Engineering.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Hi.
We've, we've never really asked a consultant to come and do a presentation like this before.
Yeah.
But during, during the interview process of the selection, they just swept us off our feet. Now, if his presentation invited us half of what it was when, when they were selected for the, for the job, I think you're all going to be very impressed and very glad that we invited him. So, not to set the bar too high, and say we-
Build your way there.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Uh, as Michael and Kyle mentioned, my name is Jeff Vanderit, I'm with Great River Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and project manager, uh, with them. Give you a little bit of information about Great River. We are an engineering firm, uh, based out of Missouri. Our headquarters is in Springfield, Missouri, and we also have offices in Kansas City and Spr, or in St. Louis. Uh, we are a city and county engineering firm. We do everything from bridges, transportation, uh, stormwater, wastewater, drinking water, parks and rec, and all that in between. We're entering our 25th year of business next year, and in those 25 years, we've replaced over 850 bridges in the state of Missouri. So to give you a little bit of a background on your project on Second Street, you guys were awarded, uh, you applied and you're awarded a Accelerated Innovative Design Grant, um, in the amount of $984,000. Uh, so kudos to Michael and Kyle for, uh, being able to successfully apply for that and be awarded. Using those funds, that'll be, uh, crucial to be able to replace this bridge. Uh, the Accelerate Innovative Design Demonstration Funds is a Federal Highway Administration program. It is a program that helps offset the risk of, uh, trying to be innovative in the highway transportation sector. And so a few things that we're going to be trying to do here on your guys' project is by being innovative, by reducing, uh, construction time, so using accelerated bridge construction technologies, and specifically using pre-cast bridge element systems. Think like the Lego blocks. They come out on a truck, they stack them up, and you have a strong, safe bridge in a matter of days, and don't have to wait for concrete to set up. Other items we're going to be using are ultra-high-performance concrete. This is concrete that sets up in a matter of hours or days versus weeks or months. Um, there, then again, being able to have less impact to the community. The goal here is to try to reduce, uh, construction by about half. A bridge of this complexity and size, we would typically think it'd take about three months to complete. We would hope that with this, uh, uh, innovative ideas, we're going to be cutting that down by half, so about a month and a half for the bridge itself. Few other goals that we identified is improve safety through the corridor, and by doing that, we're going to go with a three-lane wide bridge and a three-lane roadway throughout Second Street. Also, work on making the, the sidewalks ADA compliant, make them a little bit wider, make sure the slopes and everything will work out. Also, reducing environmental impacts. We're going to be making a single-span bridge, uh, get rid of that center pier, and then, uh, also that kind of creates a natural stream bed. And then also, we'll be improving, you know, the beauty, beauty of the area, we'll bring, be bringing utilities underground, uh, hiding them inside the structure itself, so utilities are, are not so much an eyesore. Give you a little bit more background on your existing structure. It was built in 1976. It's a two-span bridge, 68 feet in length. Uh, it's a steel girder bridge that spans Stensin Creek and the Greenway. It, it is a vital, uh, major emergency and evacuation route for the nuclear power plant. It also is a, an important crossing for many industries, uh, Missouri School for the Deaf, Emergency County, Operations Center and Jail, and then separate all their major State Department facilities. 2000, in 2018, MoDOT, uh, inspected the bridge. They, uh, looked at it, they, the deck, they gave a deck rating of three out of nine, which is pretty serious, and they, they recommended repairs or some type of, uh, rehabilitation, which I believe kind of probably spurred Michael and Kyle to make some applications for some funding, to make sure that it could be, uh, done for you guys. So, there's, our plan here, again, what I talked about, was that going with the three driving lanes. We're going to have two exterior lanes, and then that center lane would be a two-way left-turn lane, and then, uh, well, and the bridge will be a single-span, 80-foot-long bridge. We'll leave the existing invents, the existing concrete walls in place. They're, they're structurally sound, there's not too much wrong with them. We'll do a little bit of patching on some cracks and stuff, but for the most part, those walls are good. We'll take out those middle, uh, middle, that interior, that center wall, to improve those hydraulics and create a natural stream bed. We'll be putting, uh, an improved traffic barriers, sidewalks on both sides. Also, right off the bridge, there's Oak Street, we'll be, uh, improving that intersection, and again, trying to hit the, the accelerated bridge construction, uh, reducing, uh, the impacts to the community. I put together a, uh, um, a video for you guys to kind of see the, the game plan. It's a little bit easier to see the game plan in a video than it is to, uh, to really talk about it. So, the next here is our, our video. There we go. So here again, this is your existing crossing. It's a two, two-lanes narrow, you have a three-foot sidewalk on the north side. We'll come in, we're going to close the bridge down, uh, completely to traffic and begin demolition. We'll start by removing railing and the, the superstructure, the concrete deck, the steel beams, and, uh, and that center pier. We'll try to work with the utility companies and get the utilities underground before the project starts, but any that we can't do, we'll do it at the time of demolition and construction. Once we get that done, we'll start, uh, uh, the construction underground, installing piles, putting a pre-cast in-bent wall, um, right behind the existing wall, and come back up top and start putting these pre-cast adjacent box beams down. This reduces the need to pour a, a cast-in-place concrete deck, then again, reducing about a month's worth of time for curing. To reduce some of the visuals, we'll come in with a, a, an asphalt-wearing surface on top of that bridge, add the concrete sidewalk, or sidewalks and the concrete barrier. Finally, we'll put that, that striping in and open- Finally, we'll put that striping in and open up traffic. The goals here are that we should be ready to advertise this project for public fags come spring 2022, start construction summer of 2022, and be finished by the fall. And again, it's improving Oak Street there at the intersection and coming around with the three lanes. Massive improvement to the area. So with that being said, I'd open up any questions that you might have and happy to do anything.
Couple of questions. Why do we want that center lane? What's the, because there's nowhere to turn in the middle of the bridge, obviously.
Yes. That's going to be very conducive to the typical section that we are proposing for Second Street. So it's going to be continuation.
On through.
Okay.
Around the roundabout businesses.
Makes sense.
And the roundabout, the turn lane at Av. Route C.
Okay, thanks. And is there any barrier between the traffic lanes and the sidewalks?
Actually, there's going to be an eight-inch.
The sidewalks are going to be taller than typical. And so to prevent that, at lower speeds, we think it's plenty acceptable for.
Sure.
What will the impact be to the trail underneath?
It'd be closed during construction, but it'd be the same conditions, more or less, as it is currently.
Is that part of this project at all, or is that separate?
We weren't planning on impacting it in really any way besides just closing it down for construction.
Okay.
Well, okay, you're moving that center pier. Well, that, and it's going to increase, improve the hydraulic. So will that prevent some flooding? Because sometimes that gets flooded out with the trail edge.
That is a flood plain right there. It's a Zone AE. So we did have to do some hydraulic modeling to make sure that there is no adverse impacts to upstream. And right now, it is just as good or better than what's out there.
Okay, good.
And we've found from the roundabout that you can actually cause problems by increasing the flow.
Yep, downstream.
That's true, too.
But what's the life expectancy of this bridge?
Well, you would typically say 50 to 75 years is the normal lifespan of a bridge. A few things that, probably the most innovative portion of the project is doing the in-bents. Those will be shipped in, just a big block slid right over the piles. And so the rest of the bridge, more or less, is very typical. We do it quite a bit over on the state with great success.
The old one lasted 45 years.
Yeah.
Expect another 45 at least.
At least, at least.
Was it? Yeah. Gotcha. So it was already older than that, yeah, when it started. Okay, and this will kind of be the same pattern a little bit, huh? Some of the old with the new.
I appreciate you.
Sounds like it makes sense.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I appreciate this. Let's explain it to me. Just really, yeah. Thank you.
No, you're very welcome. Thank you.
I think that'd be a nice addition, being able to make a left turn on Oak Street from the middle so it can keep traffic flowing pretty good on that. That's going to work out pretty good.
Yeah.
That's where Dan Hughes or Turner, you can turn him to the side.
Right.
So I know that we have funds coming to us from the state. That is a big plus, and we're thankful to have those. Do we have a projected, as we know, none of us have crystal ball to decide what the future's going to bring. But between now and the summer of 2022, extra cost for us as the city coming out of, you know, from our portion, do we have an idea about what that might be? Because that's something that I don't believe that we budgeted for an amount, but we didn't budget for any inflation, did we, Bill?
Right. We, the engineers gave us a budget to work with. And if we take the grant funds, we budgeted adequate city money to cover the projected budget. Now, it could go over. It could come in less. It's part of the deal.
Councilman, we believe that the bridge will be less than the grant amount. And we have an approach on the west side of the bridge that goes approximately to Addison as part of this bridge project.
Okay.
If prices spike even further than they already are, we will shorten that portion up to meet our 9/8 order.
Just a question. I mean, it's obvious that things are going up.
It is. Yep.
Cost is going up.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Next up, council concerns. Start to my right this evening, Councilman Washington.
Not a concern, but I'm looking to set up a meeting for my constituents to possibly, to voice their concerns. I'm looking to set up a meeting pretty soon, so hopefully I can get a future date.
Ward, Town Hall, sort of?
I'll talk with the other ward of the council and see if we can come up with a date.
Don't do it at 8:00 AM. It's a record. Make it later in the day. People won't come. But good luck with that.
I just wanted, a future date's going to come, so we'll make that announcement later.
Good.
Great, very good. Thank you. Councilman Coles.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilman Brown.
I am good at this point. Thank you.
Councilman Stowe.
Nothing except for a kudos to Kyle and Kathy. I brought a request from my business to them, and they were able to immediately fulfill it. So thank you to them.
All right.
Other than that, nothing?
Yeah. Councilwoman Reclu?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
I have a big list.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We are up to resolutions. Should we push through? Keep pushing? Five-minute break? Okay. Let's take five, guys.
Out there though, that's a thing.
No. He's bigger than I am.
Okay. Back at it. Resolutions, Councilman Coles, Resolution thirty-four twenty-five, sir.
All right. Resolution number thirty-four twenty-five. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the Callaway Chamber of Commerce of Fulton, Missouri, for services to be rendered in 2022 and establish an effective date. And I make a motion to adopt Resolution number thirty-four twenty-five at this council meeting.
Second.
All right. We heard your report tonight, pretty self-explanatory. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Man, that was too easy. All right.
Look out next year.
Right. We could go two years in a row with no problem.
We've done great.
All right. Moving on. Resolution number thirty-four twenty-six, if you would, Mr. Washington.
Resolution number thirty-four twenty-six. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the assistance to the firefighter grant and authorizing the city monitor and manage. I make a motion that we accept Resolution thirty-four twenty-six tonight.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, and this is for bunker gear, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. If you would, chief.
There you go.
Yes, it's for a set of bunker gear for each of our personnel. Right now, everyone, we're trying to get everyone to have two sets. When they have a fire, it's contaminated. And, you know, if they have a fire early in their shift, they're going to have to wear that contaminated gear all twenty-four hours. Takes several hours to get it washed and dried. And research is showing that this is where firefighters are getting cancer from the contaminants from their gears going in their lymph nodes. So we're trying to get a second set of gear. So you have a fire at eight o'clock in the morning, you get that gear washed and put your fresh gear on for the rest of the shift.
Sounds like a no-brainer. But it's a lot of money, though, right?
It does seem like, yeah, they are.
Yep, it's going up, too.
Yeah. So if we get the grant, it'd be a small match on our part?
It'd be a ten percent match. So it's ninety-five thousand, it'd be ninety-five hundred for the city.
So instead of the approximate five percent, chief, it's a ten percent?
I think it's ten percent, yes. It's...
Yeah, I think I'm reading five.
Five percent, so it'd be half of ninety-five.
Yeah, that sounds like...
And that's a fight.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Five percent of the ninety-five, right? Okay, thank you.
Where's the grant coming from?
The grant?
That's the, what grant is it?
Yeah.
It's an assistance to firefighters grant. It opens every year. We've received air packs twice since I've been here, radios. We've done pretty well on that grant.
Okay. So when do, when do we expect to know any of that?
It'd probably be March or April of next year.
Okay. But we, even if we don't get the grant, we need to consider other revenue avenues so to make this happen, but let's go for the grant first, obviously.
Get that gear, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you, chief. Any other discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Ordinances, Councilwoman Nelson is not here tonight. What are we going to do?
Oh, no.
Who wants to do this?
I'll do it.
Councilman Bryan, thank you.
Bill number sixteen twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission amended amendment to the state block agreement regarding project number nineteen dash zero four zero alpha dash two. I make a motion, we move bill sixteen twenty-nine to second reading at next scheduled meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I amend that? Can I do the second reading tonight? That way it can be wrapped up. We only have one meeting in December.
That's a good point. Councilwoman Reclu, are you okay with that?
Yes, I withdraw.
So I make a motion to take bill sixteen twenty-nine to second reading at tonight's meeting.
And we have Councilwoman Reclu?
At the second.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I wasn't thinking about December.
That's good thinking there, thank you.
Yeah, good point.
Anything we want to kind of talk about on this?
Extra nine, extra nine hundred bucks.
Yeah. A little bit extra, so. All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And if you would again, sir.
Bill number sixteen twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relationship to Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission amendment to state block agreement regarding project number nineteen dash zero four zero alpha dash two. I make a motion to send bill sixteen twenty-nine to third reading at next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All of those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Thank you. On, Councilman West, if you'd present bill number sixteen thirty.
Sure. I think you hit the right page here. Bill number sixteen thirty, ordinance number blank. An ordinance amending chapter one-ten Traffic and Vehicles, section one-ten dash three forty. Parking on certain streets prohibited or limited, Fulton City Code prohibiting, by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on portions of Adeline Drive, Commons Loop, and E-7th Street and establishing effective date. I move that bill number sixteen thirty be considered for second reading at our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. Motion in a second. So this street's having some issues.
What this is, it's a bunch of streets down there in the new subdivision, kind of behind the bowling alley off of Collier Lane. All those streets are twenty-six foot by design. It looked good on paper. What we have learned is that on a twenty-six-foot street, if there's parking on both sides, there's not room down the middle for a fire truck. Kyle's crew made door hangers. They put door hangers out on all the doors. Did you hear back from anybody?
No, I mean, I talked to approximately half of the line, but door hangers out on Adeline. I didn't really have anybody to have the issue with it. Once it's done, we'll see.
So what this, what this ordinance is going to do is restrict traffic, parking to one side of the street.
Have they picked one side yet?
Is there a lot of parking? Yeah, it's on the maps that are in there. Is it, is there a lot of parking happening there now? Is that how we recognize this, or?
Yes, there is. And actually, Chief Kofelt on Commons Loop, I believe. Commons Loop, several, maybe a couple of months back, had a call there and had to move some cars just to, just to be able to respond to that, to that residence. So it is an issue through there, and it's going to be an issue this winter, too, when we have the clouds now. So we, the merit answer to your question would be the west side on Adeline, and I believe it's the south side on, on Commons Loop.
So is twenty-six feet our normal subdivision street width, or is that?
Twenty-six foot is a local, is a local road street width, but, you know, to have traffic parked on, have parking on both sides, it's, it's, it's not really what we want. It's cheaper for, it's cheaper for a, a developer, you know, to put a street in and get houses in the community, and that's, that's what's, is really the driver, you know? The developer can put a street in and build some houses, and it's cheaper on his end. But of course, we got to deal with it once it's built.
Right, I'm just wondering, is that our standard, or is it normally our standard's wider than that?
We have, like on Commons Loop, we, we actually paid for the increase with on Commons Loop as it's, as it's coming through the bowling alley and everything right through there. We expanded that, I believe it was thirty-two foot wide for, for future, because we've got, we own that, that property where the fire station is and everything. And we were talking about at one point ballparks or something there in the future.
Sure.
So we wanted that a little, little wider through there, because we thought it may end up being a more of a thoroughfare. But it depends on the volume of traffic, how much volume of traffic is, is, you know, for the street width.
And those driveways in those homes are smaller, too, they really are.
There's not a lot of, right. And a lot of people use their, their garage as storage space and not parking space, so.
Exactly.
I, I don't think I'm getting my question out correctly, then.
We won't.
What is our, what is our standard for a subdivision?
Like Southland down there, what's the width of the street?
I'm not even sure what they were in Westwood, to be honest.
We, we will, we will, right now, we will let somebody build a street, like in Willow Creek or South Winds, at twenty-six foot wide. Now, that, that comes with issues like this, you know? The developer, a lot of times, will, will choose to go wider himself to, to make it a better area for people to park and use the street to have street parking. But, you know, our stand, we have a twenty-six-foot wide road, we have a thirty-two-foot wide road, and so forth. And, and actually, in our ordinances, which are, which are being updated as we speak with, with Dennis and a consultant that we have, we have, in our codes, I think the minimum street width in Fulton is twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five foot, something in, in our codes. But what we put out there to, to developers in our, in our standards book is twenty-six foot is the, is the minimum width.
Okay, so my point is, we probably need to be reviewing that so we don't end up with another situation like this in the future.
Well, I think we need to make sure that...
Or we mitigate it with parking on one side. Or we mitigate it with only parking on one side of the street.
Right, I think we just make it, make it a known, more of a known fact up front that if you, if you put a twenty-six-foot wide street in, we're going to limit street parking. And the developer, in this case, he, he knows that we're doing this, and he's on board with it.
But then we start getting into enforcement issues and all this kind of stuff, and people park there anyway, and then we'll have a situation, so it's really...
Yeah, it seems like there should be a population density requirement or something of that nature.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
I just ask, we look at that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike. I think we can clean that up and make it more straightforward.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just saying, I'd like to, I'd like to prevent things like this, so.
Hey, this is a problem now, let's not have it again.
Yeah, exactly.
That's...
Thank you.
I think that's what I needed to hear, too, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Appreciate the work on this.
Bless you.
Hopefully that'll fix that deal.
Is that second?
Go ahead.
No, I'm not going to go there, no. If they put out flyers. I was going to ask, is it, is it something that warrants a public hearing? But we see what public hearings turn out, and the flyers probably work just as well.
Yeah, I think some of that helps.
You did try it, though.
We did several at home, so we put something in, shut something in the mailbox. Physically knocked on the doors, and like you said, I did Adeline myself. You know, more, there's more houses on that stretch than we have. I thought I had about half of, half of the rest.
Thank you.
They probably don't want that issue either. They probably realize that that needs to be corrected, so.
Hopefully people will comply.
Yep. All right. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We'll read that again next time. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next up, Councilwoman Reclu, bill number sixteen thirty-one.
Now, do we want to review the second reading tonight and clean this up by the end of the year, or do we not want to?
We can do, we can either do first the second tonight, or second and third next council meeting and clean it up by the end of the year.
Which is my plan is for the other one.
Thank you, yes.
It's up to you.
Yes, okay. Our bill number sixteen thirty-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the city of Fulton, Holt Summit, Missouri, for animal shelter services, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said agreement and establishing an effective date. I make a motion for bill number sixteen thirty-one to be considered for second reading at tonight's meeting.
Second. Motion in a second.
Holt Summit recently lost their, I'm, for lack of a better term, veterinary services that was taking care of their animal shelter function. They came up, and we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We agreed on a price of seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, and that gets them the first five animals, whether they be cats or dogs. They've, to the best of, Dennis is over the animal control, and, and we had Tina Barnes at the meeting, to the best of our knowledge, they never brought. We did this a few years ago, too. To the best of our knowledge, they never brought five animals. But we threw that, we threw that little clause in there, if they bring a sixth one, it's an extra hundred bucks. The way it works is, we have to keep the animal seven days, kind of in Holt Summit's name, so if the Holt Summit owner has the opportunity to come and claim it. But at the end, end of seven days, the animal is ours. And we will do everything we can to get the animal adopted. But if that's not possible, then we have other options as well. But we will, we don't return it to Holt Summit, we don't do anything, we just, it becomes ours.
And we don't go pick these animals up?
These, all these animals are delivered to the city of Fulton Animal Shelter. And even, kind of, we even, I even offered them a key, and that, they didn't want a key, they only want to come up during, during business hours and not, not have unrestricted access to the pound. Each animal will be checked in, will be tagged, will be segregated in the building. Now granted, if it's a mean or vicious or ill animal when, when it's delivered, we have the right to deal with that animal as we see fit from, from day one.
Did I dream this? I thought Holt Summit was building a new shelter. Did I dream that? Maybe I did. So this agreement, though, works out okay for us, and kind of, kind of wash a little bit for both parties, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So are they going to pay the seven fifty regardless? Do they bring us any, or is it going to be a, they bring us something, then they pay us money?
They give us a check for seven hundred and fifty.
They bring us one, they bring seven fifty.
They bring seven, but, now, I mean, as I kind of pointed out to them in the meeting, for nine thousand dollars a year, they don't have to worry about animal control issues. It's, make me that offer, Holt Summit, and I'm going to jump all over it.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out why we want to do this, I'll be honest with you.
It's nine thousand dollars a year.
And we have the capacity.
We have the staff, you know, staffing's going to be, have basically no impact on them.
There may come a day where it could be an impact. It sounds like at this point...
Well, it's the five animals a month is...
Kind of a cover, cover cost, yeah.
That's why we put the limit at, at five.
My only other concern is, this goal, this is running for three years, goes through December of 2024, and I would like to see it for one year instead of three, in case we say this isn't working out, or, you know, is there some other way we can get out of it? I don't know, but...
Bill, can you speak to the experiences we had when you said we did it a couple of years ago or so?
I don't know, over the course of a couple of years?
I think, I think they took four, five animals last year through the facility they were using, or this.
Oh, other than, okay, I see.
And it was under that, two years they did it.
There's also a ninety-day termination clause in this contract. And actually, we, we initially signed this contract back in 2018 with Holt Summit. They chose to terminate the contract with us per those terms. I want to say in early 2020, late 2019. So it is very possible for us to get out or for them to get out if we find that to be necessary.
I, I can't imagine they're willing to get out. I can't imagine they're willing to get out, I think, or...
And Mike, that's under exhibit A, number fourteen, is the termination agreement.
Very good. Any other questions on this?
Okay.
This is going to be for, moved to second read?
The second reading tonight. And the third would be the next, last meeting.
So this, this motion is to approve for second read tonight. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And if you would again?
Yes. Ready for the?
Yeah.
Bill number sixteen thirty-one. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the city of Holt Summit, Missouri, for animal shelter services, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said agreement and establish an effective date. I make a motion for bill number sixteen thirty-one to advance to third reading at next scheduled meeting. Councilman.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, third readings. We have bill number sixteen twenty-seven, if you would, Councilman Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Question from Adam Clerk first. Do you want me to integrate the additional verbiage into my original motion?
So what I think would be appropriate is to just go ahead and read what's here and make your motion, then we'll get that amendment that we'll talk about here in a sec.
Okay, thank you. Bill number sixteen twenty-seven, as previously amended, an ordinance amending section one-ten dash two forty-eight Speed Limits, paragraph two Fulton City Code, by adding a street to be designated as a school zone and establishing an effective date. I move for approval for final reading at tonight's meeting.
I'll second it.
We have motion in a second.
Okay, so Kyle's crew did go out and actually measure based on the information that you guys decided on last time, which I believe was seven hundred feet to either side of the entrance of the facility.
Yes, ma'am.
In order for it to fit our city code and to be uniform with those designations we have set forth, we do need an amendment. The amendment was put in your notes for you, and the amendment proposed is Wood Street beginning at five hundred feet north of Westwood and continuing north along Wood Street for a distance of one thousand one hundred and eighty feet. So if someone could please make that motion to amend it, I'd appreciate that.
I'll make that motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have that motion in a second. Was that clear enough for everyone? Does anyone have...
They do supply the map.
Yeah, there is a map.
So the school zone can only be eleven hundred and eighty feet?
Kyle, would you, or whoever is appropriate?
No, so basically, you, the city council decided last time that they were going to go seven hundred feet on either side.
Correct.
However, in the city code, we have to, we have to designate these school zones by the street. We can't just say, you know, by Courtney's driveway, let's go this way and this way. It actually has to be by the street with the designated amount of feet.
And I asked last meeting that, you know, to, because I was going by that, that picture we had, and, you know, getting close as I could eyeball it. So I was, I asked the city engineers to do, to do what they did, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
So the, the sign just north of Westwood, as you're, as you're driving north, would be just north of the YMCA's second entrance, so most north entrance. Then the sign, the sign that you would see coming southbound would be generally about the top of the hill, so, coming down, yeah. Yeah, if you're coming from industrial to, you know, down, down to the YMCA, essentially, that sign is at the top of the hill, yeah. Any questions?
Appreciate you clearing that up for us. Any other discussion on this?
The only other thing that I'd like to see committed to, and we've spoke of it a lot, and make the commitment to do it, is, is flashing lights during the times. The school, if I understand it correctly, the schools control that, so they could do it of a morning and of an afternoon, and, and make it so people realize exactly what's going on, that there is definitely a school zone there during those hours, and that's when the speed limit is, is taken care of.
Yeah, they can always be improved, improvements made there.
Is that something we could use ARPA funds for?
That's what I was wondering more for them.
Or whatever it's called, the...
I don't know.
Discretionary fund, that's what I'm thinking of, what about that?
I, I am not going to say yes or no to that.
Okay, I know, it's, nobody knows, right?
We could find out what it costs to start with, maybe.
With the ones, with the ones over there?
It would be, a pair of them would be somewhere around six, I would say six thousand.
Say six thousand or so.
Six thousand, so, it's not that much money.
Are they controlled, the ones over at Bush, are they controlled from inside the building?
At Bartley's?
No.
Bartley's, yes, yeah.
Bartley's is school control, but our child, we could work that out.
I do, if we do find out we have the funding source, then that's when we can talk about doing it here, there, on the other side of Wood Street for St. Peters, McIntyre, the colleges.
They all need something, yeah.
I mean, we'll, we'll...
Yeah, I think that's something we need to talk about in the future, yes.
I think so, too.
That dollar amount is, is not that big when you talk about kids' lives and things and stuff, so I mean, I think that's...
Well, even, even an individual in an accident, one accident, the person's car, I mean, if you're a car accident...
Yeah, six thousand is not a lot of money.
If we can, if we can prevent that from happening, I think that's, that's a positive.
I do.
That aside, this, I believe, is a step in the right direction, so.
I do, too.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had one that, I had one other constituent reach out to me opposed to putting a school zone in there. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Make sure the council's aware of that. I've had four people total, which is unusual.
Yeah.
Hardly ever here. Nobody's support.
So, well, too, I know I had forwarded on that email where she had asked for it to be just a little bit longer on that north side. Just wanted to throw that out there if any, I know that, that would change things because you don't have exact feet and all that sort of stuff, so.
Yeah.
But that was her, her request was, I think it's going right, right to that corner because that's where coming up there, you can't see it coming up the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's further down. That, I mean, what you suggested was further down. I asked Kyle that question before the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, moving forward, we can get a little better about explaining these things a little bit more clear to, to the council up here. You know, we, we get asked to make these decisions, and it's hard when you don't have really what's the problem.
You're right.
So I think, I, I think we failed a little bit there. We can do better, so. We'll try to put that on my New Year's resolution.
Maybe put, maybe put some temporary markers out or something of that nature, you know? Might, might help in the future. So everybody go look and see.
I've been on this council for 12 or 13 years.
Yeah, I'm 10 years.
Same situation, just kind of get up and hat.
Yeah.
I think we're doing better, too.
All right, so just to clarify, the motion on the floor is to amend the ordinance to say Wood Street beginning 500 feet north of Westwood and continuing north along Wood Street for a distance of 1,180 feet. So we'll vote on the amendment first and then back to the original motion after that.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Okay. We're back to the voting.
Motion as amended.
As amended, yes, amended.
On that motion, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no?
No.
Only Councilman West opposed? Okay, so that's five in favor, it passes.
Okay, and then we've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, we will do the final vote by roll call.
All right. Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
All right, five affirmative, one opposed, and two absent. It passes.
Very good. All right, thanks. We'll move on to bill number 1628. Councilman Braun, please.
Bill number 1628. An ordinance amending chapter 42, Elections, Fulton City Code, by repealing certain legislation, enacting new legislation in lieu thereof, and in establishing an effective date, I make a motion to take bill 1628 to third and final reading at tonight's meeting, or for final reading at tonight's meeting.
Final, yep. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on this? This is our third read on it. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? You've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would take roll call for final up.
Okay, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.[1701.12]